I was thinking.
Hi, I'll be there in just a minute.
Hello.
Hello. How are you, Molly?
Good, how are you?
I'm tired. So, but that's such a good tone for a meeting, doesn't it? I'm fine, I'm fine.
No. Hi. It doesn't, it doesn't help when it gets dark at 4:30 in the afternoon.
I know. I don't think, I think Andy knows this, I don't think Teresa is gonna join us. I think she's driving back from.
Right. From Florida. Did she send anything? I thought she said she was maybe gonna send something.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't get it.
Okay.
Maybe Andy received something.
Well, I had to clarify with Andy if we were going to discuss the specific proposals tonight. Maybe she thought that's what we were doing and if we're not, she.
What did I just miss?
Oh, just that Teresa's not attending and I hadn't seen, she said she might send something in writing, but I hadn't seen that.
The only thing I saw from, yeah, you're right, you're right. She did say that she was gonna send something, didn't she? You know, I'm gonna go do a check, see if I find anything.
But Danielle, you may be right. She may have thought we were talking about the specific firms and our intent tonight was to talk about process.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, I don't have anything from her that I can see. So. And I guess that we've got almost everyone here. I don't see Tamika. But I'm really happy to see how there's so many people showing up here today. I guess 6:02, let's give Tamika another moment to show up here. I know she knew about the meeting. Oh. I suppose there's nothing harmful getting started about 6:02 PM. So I can call the meeting to order if Dr. Moser, you think that's a good idea?
I, I, I can talk slowly to give Tamika time to.
All right, then I'll, I'll call the meeting to order and do a roll call. Molly Krychowiak.
Here.
Danielle Bailey.
Here.
Andrew Franklin is here. And Ms. Zukovic and Ms. Heem are excused. Agenda approval is item B. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Molly Krychowiak?
I gotta change the spelling on here. I.
And Danielle Bailey.
I.
And Andrew Franklin both I. The agenda is approved. Okay, our item for the agenda is item number two A, which is discussion item, board discussion on the process for selecting a firm to facilitate the process of searching for our next superintendent. And Dr. Moser.
Well, thank you, President Franklin, members of the school board. In an earlier discussion with President Franklin, we, we tried to lay out a preliminary timeline for the board to discuss the selecting of a search firm. And the first step that President Franklin and I felt would be appropriate would be calling the board together to discuss the process. And it was felt that this discussion, this meeting would be held totally in the open so that the staff, the faculty, administrators, and the community could listen in and participate in this discussion. It was important enough to the Glendale River Hills community that President Franklin felt that there was a great community interest in for a certain, the selection of a search firm and of course eventually leading to the select of a new superintendent for the school district. So, school board members, my first suggestion, and this is where President Franklin and I went when we met the first time, was we start from the back end of the process. And I would pose the question, when would you like to have the search firm selected by? When would you like to culminate the picking of a a search firm and then we'll fill in from that point going backwards. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's exactly what we discussed.
So I'll pose that question to the three of you, and I don't see Tamika on yet. When would you like to have the search firm selected by? By the way, let me, before I get there, and I apologize. But the question I'm gonna ask is when would you like to have the search firm selected by? But before we get there, I have contacted all six firms or six firms who have submitted proposals. The school board members, this is for the faculty, for the administrators, the staff, and the community. This, this comment, the school board members have all six proposals that were submitted by the search firms. I have contacted each of the six firms, thanked them for submitting a proposal, and told them that the board is now in the process of considering those proposals and that the board was having their first meeting tonight. So I have acknowledged the firms, the receipt of their proposals, and that the board was beginning the process tonight. So we have, we have kept in communication with the six, the six firms. And the six firms will be ranging in, coming from various parts of the Midwest, ranging from, the consultants were, are from Wisconsin, from Iowa, from Nebraska, from Illinois. The, the board has a wide spread of firms to pick from a geographic area, and they're all, they're all veterans at doing this work. There are no neophytes involved. So with that, and, and, and board members, do you have any questions on, on, on that background information? You, you've received the, the, the ream of paper, when I printed it out, it was a ream of paper on the, the proposals. When would you like, when, when is the suggestion that we complete the selection, or you complete the selection of the search firm? Any, any thoughts, any discussion on that?
Thing I'd like to throw out, just to start. For me, I think that we want to have a couple of months, not formal overlap because, you know, I, I, I think you'll be there and you'll be doing a job for some time, but I think we're gonna want to have some finality and some planning. And it seemed to me like contract issues aside and, you know, finalizing it, I'd really like to know who we're gonna have by the end of March. I think March 31st is kind of a decent time to figure things out. That certainly allows for some transition coordination and also potentially anyways notice, you know, that person might have to get with respect to the expiration of his or her contract. So, you know, I, I just think practically, if we want someone starting July 1st by April 1st, or really whatever 90 days is for that, assuming that our 90 days is kind of standard, I would like to have someone by March 31st.
Okay, Andy, I'm sorry, I thought we were asking when we'd like to have the search firm selected.
And I probably phrased that wrong, Danielle. I, I probably, we probably should go back or go to the selection of the superintendent. President Franklin is probably right.
Okay.
Thank you for raising that. That's, you're right. I think what should guide us to start it is the selection of the new superintendent. And I apologize, I got ahead of, I got excited, so.
Well, yeah, but, but I'll tell you, I timed things backwards and I, I really would like to have the search firm. And I go off to my thoughts on this because I can't get from backwards point of view. I, I really started that when we want someone in and to tie directly what you're asking, Danielle, I started from when we have to have someone in, or at least what my assumption is, and tried to work my way back. And I'd really like to have, and if we're talking about the search firm selected and taken care of, I, I'd really like to have it taken care of if possible, you know, in the next month to, you know, maybe the end of December. You know, if possible. I, I think that, you know, if we're aiming for the middle of December, you know, that would be, you know, good transition, a good timing to, you know, get whittled down from, you know, six to one. You know, interview, figure out, you know, our next steps in here.
So I have not reviewed all of the proposals yet, but I've, I've started, started reviewing them. And it looks like to me that the majority of the proposals would propose a timeline that starts with our first initial meeting with them being in mid-December. Most of them are around December 16th, some of them just say December. So that to me presupposes that we would have selected them prior to mid-December. So probably early December or somewhere in that first week or two in order to stay with their suggested timelines. And I think almost all of them as well, their timelines conclude with selection of a final candidate in March, either mid, mid to the end of March with an offer being extended for that person to start July 1st. So it's, so I think all the proposals are in line with, with that. So my thought would be having the search firm, or having us to select it early December. And I'd be open there if it worked with, you know, it's kind of, I don't know if these search firms need a certain amount of notice to get started or. So that's, those are my two cents.
Molly?
Well, I guess my, my first question is, is it, is it reasonable? Working backwards, is it, is it reasonable and is, is March a good time to get a superintendent? Is that the ideal time to get the best candidate?
If I may, President Franklin, if, my opinion is yes, that you are probably ahead of the game. A little bit, that's prime time.
Okay.
You will not be, if, if, as Danielle said, if it's, if it's, if it's in the, the mid-March, in, in, it's certainly not going beyond the end of March. I think you're gonna get the prime pick candidates. As you move into the summer, I think you start to see people going elsewhere. The other thing that I think may happen this year because of COVID-19, because of the difficulties of the year, it isn't just the teachers that are, are having a rough year. Superintendents are having a rough year. This is a tough. And you may see a large number of resignations or retirements coming this year, larger than usual. And so if you wait, if you wait longer than, than March, I, I, I think you may have a lot of competition with school districts because people are, you know, we've been worrying about teachers getting burned out because of, of the move towards remote learning, virtual, virtual teaching. It's, it's been a tough year for superintendents as, as well. And I, you know, I communicate frequently with the superintendents in the southeastern Wisconsin area. And it's, I, I promise you, it's been a, it's, it's been difficult. It's difficult for educators. So I'm saying, I think you're gonna, there are gonna be a lot of retirements and super, and retirements and resignations from superintendents. Get out there when we're talking about it. I think you're showing good foresight in, in the process.
Yeah, and, and I'd rather try to be a little bit more aggressive because I, I guess I feel like, even though people probably aren't gonna be doing as much traveling this year, we still have the holidays coming up and so things do tend to shut down in the last week of December and the last week of November. I, my guess is it's probably pretty reasonable that if we were gonna start, and, and not jumping ahead, but if we were gonna start to interview the firm that we select to interview, that we could have that done reasonably by the beginning of December. And by the way, Danielle, you're right, most of those proposals that we got, you know, they really did, you know, it's football, end of March at the latest to have the candidate to the beginning of March. And so, you know, I think, you know, you gotta work yourself backward and give yourself time just in case you get slipped up. But and Dr. Moser, you're right, I think, you know, the sooner the better. I think we may get some competition here. You know, we're, we're a firm that's also having, you know, resignation. So a school that's also having resignation. So I think the sooner we get on this, the better.
Well, I agree. And I don't know, I, I, it would be nice to get, I mean, I wanna be thoughtful in our process, but it'd also be nice to start working with a firm or the firm that we select as soon as possible. So we can start this process.
Well, going to Danielle's comment, if I may, President Franklin, on, on what Molly just said. If you select a firm by mid-December, there's no reason, even with the holidays, you couldn't have your initial meeting with the firm before January 1st. I don't, I don't see any reason why that couldn't happen. So if, if the selection was done by mid-December, you still have the holidays. But then there could be a meeting between the board and the search firm where you start getting to know each other, you break, breaking ice, start talking about actually, the actual process of recruiting and searching for that superintendent.
So I was actually proposing slightly sooner only because most of the proposals I saw proposed a first meeting with the board December 15th or 16th.
Okay.
December.
Okay.
So that's what their timelines are, are based on. There were a couple where it was December, just December. So I'm not sure if that's, I guess, when I understand what we think the process should be, we could, if that's possible. But even if it was the, by the end of the first week of December, that gives us a week to set up a meeting with them the following week per some of their timelines.
And by the way, I mean, this is a discussion, this is in firm, you know, in terms of what's scheduled, but but, I mean, I'd like, you know, we, to see if we have consensus to maybe try to commit to making a decision the week of December 7th and just kind of lock ourselves in there at least, you know, conceptually, so we can, you know, select that firm that gives that whole week and then we could, you know, have that initial meeting, you know, at some point the following week.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, just that December 7th date.
All right, so that's, that's one thing. Then the question between now and then is how do we fill in the blanks, right, Dr. Moser?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I would, I would say you're, 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 you're doing the right thing, you're doing the right thing now. And if, if I'm hearing you, you're saying that in the week of December 7th, you'll pick the firm. And, and then that by December 15th, either you will meet with the firm or set up a meeting with the firm. And I think then, then we're on, we're, we're, we're doing very well. I would suggest, or I could allow raise the point. We're talking about process tonight. We've set aside Monday also to talk about the firm selection. It was to be criteria. And maybe we might be a little more aggressive. I'll use the word that was used earlier of either we could talk tonight about, do you want to interview all six firms? Do you want to narrow the number of firms you're gonna interview down to? To, from six, go down to four, three, two? That's process. Talk about that tonight, or we can that on the agenda for the 23rd. That's gonna be one of the questions. Do you want to interview all six of them?
So one thought I have or one suggestion, I mean, the, the fees between them, there are some, some larger variations in terms of cost, I think. And probably some other differences that may stand out to us once we review them. My, what if we came to the 11:23 meeting prepared to discuss the proposals or perhaps have our, our preferences ranked or what our follow-up questions would be or some, you know, something to that degree? And then at that meeting, we could decide how many of those we wanted to interview and try to set up interviews for the next week or two, which would get us to our deadline perhaps, or?
Sure, we, we could do that. Now, we can do that. In there, we want to time, I, I'm going to assume either one or two of you will want to do reference checking on the firms? Or you'll say, Moser, tough luck, you decided that you, you accepted being superintendent, you do, to do the reference checking. And that's your, you, you're, you're gonna, you know, you, you tell me how you want to do that. I think it's important that there's a reference check on the firms. I think the community expects. Excuse me for a second, I have to get my cat off the table here.
My dog's already left the office, so he's not gonna yell.
So if, if, if the suggestion about, I, I do like the idea of ranking. I, I'm a fan of each one of the five of you would rank off your reading. I like, I like golf scores. And I'm a golf, a good golfer. I golf, but I'm not a good golfer. And you put your top choice as number one and your bottom choice is number six, and then the score, the lowest scores would be your, your top firms. And then you can decide if you want all six or, or, or if there's a clear division between the firms. You don't, you, you probably shouldn't bring somebody in that you, you, the board isn't interested in. That's not being professional. And, and doing this as Danielle has suggested on the 23rd. Reading these proposals takes a while. I will admit that. As you have found out. And, and and they're not all the same. In, in looking at them, there is some differences between some of them. And again, I will suggest to you that you do as much of this of the 23rd in the open as possible with the community. That they see your, your deliberations.
So my only concern about doing reference check at this point is that I guess, you know, it can be clearinghouse to see, you know, if they've gotten anyone happy. And maybe that is something that we need to do. But I'm wondering if, and it's not about expediency, I'm just wondering if it makes sense that we try to narrow down the search first based on the quality of the proposal and then step onto reference checks.
Sure, I'm not willing to do that. Yeah, yeah, I think that may be, I, I'm just suggesting, I think it's, it is good to vet. Somewhere, if it's narrowing it down, if you're gonna narrow it down to whatever number it's gonna be, that we will do reference checking. We've asked for references. And I, I think that the community would feel would feel good, the faculty would feel good that, that, that's happening. And I, I, let's say, let's just say that you would narrow it down on the 23rd. Then you would either tell me or you could divide it up yourselves to, to check on the, on the firms.
You might also want to standardize the references too. I know it'll take time to ask different people questions, but I, I don't know if there are a list of questions, you know, that we can ask to standardize, you know, what is that we ask just to, not to score it, to try to quantify, you know, the information that we might get, you know, from each of these references. I, I know that there are, you know, in some cases, there are more than other, you know, some of these are have references because there's many outside the state. So there's many outside the state. There are a lot of them that are in rural areas. So we, it, it may, you know, it, it may be something that we have to decide on with processes. How many do we ask for? You know, how many do we ask? What are the questions? Do we score those? And that, and that may be a better question for next week, but I don't want to slow down the process. But I guess, you know, going back to what you were saying before, how many firms? how many firms should we have? We have to make the whole process manageable too. And, you know, I, I don't think that it's, I think it's wonderful that we have six firms. And I, I can't say that we should count out, you know, who we're going to talk to now. But I would like to reduce it by two or three, you know, to three or four firms to bring in for calls. You know, and, and obviously to have some standardized questions for each of them. So I guess that's kind of what I'm looking at. Maybe use next meeting to go through these things. Figure out what the qualities are in the search firm that we want to try to understand what the fees are and what the work is that's being offered that's different. And then figure out how to rank them and how to reference check. And we can all, you know, rank them individually too. And maybe come back with, you know, our own two cents worth about why we rank them. And, and aim for three and maybe keep four. That's what I.
I have a, I have a question for Dr. Moser. Are you, is there any, this is just the teacher and me coming out. Is there any kind of like rubric? Like when we, when I interview teachers at Nicolay, there's a form. And there's, there's a little bit of a check system or rubric. Is there a, some sort of rubric that, that is standardized, that we could use it in assessing the proposals, so that we're all like looking at from the same kind of reference point?
What, what I, we could do is that we put all the RFP, the request for proposal, in, in there, it listed characteristic.
Okay.
And we could put that together for you to see that, that that was addressed, each one of those was addressed. Certainly, we can do that.
Well, I, I guess if it's in the RFP, then we can just use that, because we have that RFP.
Right.
So we could use that as a, as kind of like a check system that they've addressed all of those.
Or if you want us to put together a, a chart or a rubric, we can do that too. That isn't that difficult to.
Well, it's extra work that I don't want to make anyone do. But I like that suggestion of just looking at the RFP and making sure that they've kind of touched on all of that. I, I just, I think it's important that for the five of us who are looking at these proposals, that there should be some standardization and objectivity in this. So we're all kind of looking at it from the same, I don't know. So if we're all going to use that RFP to kind of take a look at them, we should all use that as we, as we look at these.
I think that's a good idea, Molly.
A good idea.
My other question, because I think one of the, the things that was jumping out to me were fees. And I, what do we know about our budget for this process? And how much should that impact, you know, our reviewing of these proposals on the front end? Or is that something to come later?
Andy, I, I'll, you answer that, or?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think you should pick the best firm. Money is money. When you built the budget, you did not build this into the budget. I'm going to have to find money for it. This was not, this was not expected, that we'd be doing this at this time. But I will find money to do it. I had done research, I did research, I had done, I'm not sure grammatically, I'm not sure that's grammatically proper or not. But I, I did research to get an idea of what a search costs. And so I have a, a fair idea to work with Mike Weaver in, in finding money for the search. There, there is a basic fee, and then there is a charge for expenses. Now, you're not going to have the expenses that normally come with a superintendent search. Because most of the, the interviewing will be done Zooming. Normally, a, a search firm will charge you travel. They will come and visit with you in person. Can't do that anymore. So a lucky thing with the pandemic is
Yep.
The, the, maybe there's one good thing that's happening because of the pandemic. So we, I, I have been told that the, the fees, the expenses will be limited because of, of, of that. And that's good. But there will be a basic fee. And that may be something that you're going to negotiate with that firm. Instead of us discussing that openly in a meeting, which gives, gives somebody a upper hand in negotiating with us, you may negotiate that with the, 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 the top three or top, or the top firm when it comes time to, because that'll, it'll be negotiable. And.
So what you're actually, what you're actually suggesting is maybe our next stop is, you know, in terms of the ranking and the qualifications, we have most of that discussion in closed session, but then we report out, you know, our selection, you know, after the meeting in open session.
Yeah, since we're dealing with public monies, we don't want to give our, our hand on, on how much money, the public monies we're going to be willing to expend. If it was Danielle's personal money, we'd be happy to put that out there and say, sure, we'll, we'll spend this.
Quick feeding.
But when you're dealing with public monies, you're always careful, because it's not our money. It's, it belongs to the, to the, to the public. But I also encourage you, get the best firm, the firm that you like the best, that will serve your purposes. This is a, 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 a process that you don't do very often, and you don't want to do it very often. You want to make the right choice. Not only of the firm, but the firm needs to be the, 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 the group that helps you make the right choice for a, for our community of picking a, a superintendent. Money's important, no question about it. And I think most of the firms, most of the firms are going to be pretty close on what they're going to pay. I think they will. There may be an outlier or two in there, but. So Danielle, did I, I know I rambled.
No, that, that, no, that's, that was helpful. That's, I, I'll, my takeaway is to not
Yeah.
Let the, be the overriding or the cost of the service.
Right.
But so to look at it overall. So that was helpful.
All right then. So where that leaves us right now then is we don't know how many we're going to narrow it down to from, it looks like seven firms.
Six.
Six or seven. And seven attachments in that one email.
I have six.
Yeah, there are six proposals.
Oh, that was the cover letter. I see what, yeah, yeah. So we have six proposals. I would recommend, and I guess I don't know what other action to, or discussion to have today. But that we, what we're going to do is we're going to socialize the proposals to the board, have everyone review them, rank them, a, a, address, I guess, their qualities. And also how they want to approach reference checking. And then come back to have a mostly closed session meeting on, let's say, next Monday.
And, and, and I, I suggest, yes, I, I'm, you know, is do as much in the open that you can.
Yeah.
For transparency.
Sure.
For that part of the meeting that would, that should be in a closed session, fine. But I, I like the idea of being open with, I like being open. There's more trust that comes.
Yeah, I don't see why, if we're not talking about our own position, if we're just talking about the cost of services and comparing them, and I don't see why that has to be in closed session. Or unless I'm missing something.
No, I, 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 I would agree. I would agree. You find a reason, I almost find it's better for a public body to find a reason to do their work in the open than to try to find a reason to do it in, in, in a closed session.
Well, if you're suggesting we don't need any closed session at all, I mean, I'm fine with that. I, I, I just, you, you were talking about not kind of tipping our hand about, you know, what the finances would be, or and possibly, you know, what are, and I guess this is where the line is, but, you know, we want to have leverage in negotiation. We don't want to tell them what factors are necessarily.
Yeah.
And I think that, knowing, I want the, the whole community to know what it is that we're looking at. I mean, I guess, i- if we're going to have that conversation about personal preferences out in the open, you know, then that's just a risk of doing business. I, I don't have a problem not having that conversation with us. We can absolutely have it open. I'm just suggesting, maybe we have that closed session to start. Just make sure we're on the same page.
For example, for the three of you, when you're interviewing the superintendent candidates, your, your first interview probably will not talk about money. You will not talk. I, 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 I taught my students, when they interview, even either for a teaching job or administrative position, don't talk money. That, the, that turns the, the, the selection committee or the whoever's doing the picking turns them off. And it does. You say, how much are you going to pay me right off the bat? So money has to be talked about at some point. Maybe it's, it's in that final three that, or four that you're going to, the, the five are going to pick the interview. But not in that, in that second meeting.
I imagine if we're using the RFP to kind of go through, that's sort of our, our basis for talking points, right? The, what the responses of each of the firms to those and how we feel about their responses. And the cost of services is just one of those factors that we have to have a heavy discussion on in order to just, we're going to interview.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Did we feel like, did I miss anything for the three of you on? I, I believe Karan has set up a meeting for 6 o'clock on the 23rd for this topic. I hear the three of you saying you want time between now and the 23rd to review the six proposals and to rank them. Input, each one of you will rank them from top to bottom. Put your top at number one and your bottom at six, coming prepared to, to talk about them. The characteristics on the 23rd.
Yeah.
So the goal would be to narrow them down on the 23rd and then to delegate reference checks? And set up interviews? Or?
No, not in, not then. I, I would say.
Schedule interview?
Then you would, it, it, based on that timeline that you've identified, either start doing the interviews the week of November 30th or November 7th in, in, in that two week period. I, I, we, Karan and I would set up the interviews for you.
Let me just throw one other thing out there. I mean, it's entirely possible, although if not necessary, but it's entirely possible that we could actually whittle down the sixth to whatever number we want to by next week. We can walk out of it with, you know, some kind of a unanimity or consensus. And, you know, if we, if we, so an ounce of prevention, I guess, worth the pound of cure. The more diligent that we are, you know, in the next week to kind of go through those, the more ready we'll be to kind of jump up and, you know, and, and hit the pavement, get the ball rolling, whatever other big metaphor.
So, so will that information then be shared to the two board members that are missing tonight? Will they get an email of the timeline, so then we're all on the same page and everyone knows what we're doing? Is that?
Yes, I, I think that's a necessity. One of the important qualities that I've learned from superintendent searches is that all, all the board members have to be, have to be actively involved in the process. It can't, a, a board member can't dominate, or two board members can't dominate. It has to be all, when the superintendent is picked, that superintendent could very well ask the question, do all the board members support me? I've seen that happen. And, and, and I've seen it happen. And I've seen it where, let's say, the, the board president, Mr. Franklin will say, well, it was a three to two vote. For you, for superintendent person will say, I don't want to come. Because they don't feel that they have the, the, the support of the board. So I will do that, Molly. I guess I went off again on a tangent. I will certainly contact Teresa and Tamika and make sure they have all the information.
Okay.
Say, Andy, you don't want to decide if you're going to narrow it down from six until the 23rd and to the number that you want to narrow it down to until the 23rd.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, but we should at least allow for a potential action, you know, just in case we do, right? Because doesn't it take, well, I guess the question, does the board need to take a potential action to, you know, decide what those firms are? I mean, we, we have to record some kind of a decision if we do.
Yeah, I would suggest you would. I would, I, I think that's part of the transparency. If you, if you are narrowing it down to three or four, I think it's good for the community and the faculty and administrators to know that you're narrowing it down to three or four and who they are. That's okay. It's public business. And, and naming, that you would take, you'd take action to narrow it down and you would actually name the firms. Yes.
Yeah, okay. That's fine then. All right. If there's nothing else, then we do have visitor participation on the agenda. And I would like to hear from public, but I don't want to rush if we have anything else to discuss.
I don't have any other questions.
Danielle, Dr. Moser. All right, then I'll move along to visitor participation. Visitor participation. If, well, I don't have my little procedural notes in here. So visitor participation, the board may be limited to a response. If you can, please keep your comment to three minutes or less. If someone made the same or similar comment, try to focus on the differences. But I will give everyone a moment to line up if there's anyone who has any questions that they want to ask about the process. If so, please raise your hand, and then I will call on you accordingly. And I guess we'll start out, I see Carla Pennington Cross, so we can unmute you. Oops, sorry. Did I screw that up? There we go. Hello.
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Good. Please take your name and your address before I forget to ask everyone else.
Two seconds ago, I said I would remember, and I was already forgetting. Carla Grace Pennington Cross, 909 West Acacia Road, Glendale, Wisconsin, 53217. Yes. Thank you for making this transparent. I really appreciate it. I just had a couple really quick follow-up questions. And they might be ignorant questions. Is the RFP itself publicly available?
Sure. I don't have a problem with that. If the board does, does it, I, I would be happy to send it to you.
It's on the website, isn't it?
Yeah, I just don't know. Can I just like go to the board website and find it there, the RFP?
It's right on the, it's right on the front page, dated October 22nd. If you go to the homepage on Glendale. It is right there in the calendar. It says Glendale River Hills District News. It says request for proposal.
I figured I was ignorant. And then are the submissions from the, the submissions are not publicly available, right? The submissions from the search firms?
They may be. Let me, you know, I've got a, a, two attorneys sitting here plus. Carla, let me check on that. I have no problem. I don't have no problem, but let me check with our attorney on that one.
I'm not proposing that I want to read a reading, but it's the kind of question you might get. I just wondered if you know. Okay. And then my last question is kind of the big. Okay. And then my last question is kind of the bigger, what I'm sitting here thinking about. You know, I'm wondering when you're going to get staff and caregivers involved in the selection process. What, when do you envision sort of a more formal role for parents, caregivers, staff in any sort of interview process or decision-making?
So I, I'm just in kind of starting to look at these proposals. I think most of the firms have stakeholder meetings, surveys and the like set for January. Jan, right, is that, I think in January. So I think once they've met with the board, then they would start, start engaging other stake, and find out who the stakeholders are from the board and, and Dr. Moser, then I think that's when they start engaging.
I think that, yeah, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Well, it, and, and, and that's, that what Daniel said is correct, period. Now, there can be other elements of openness that the board could decide to do, like they could have a, a, a session for the final two where the, the, the community would ask questions, the faculty would ask questions and the board would listen to the, to the questions and the answers. If, if, if in the process that the board sets up with the firm, they, that could, that could happen in January, that could happen in February. But I, I have seen, I have seen that where the, 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 the community gets a crack at asking questions. When I came to Nicolay, that is what they did with me. They put me through, I, I met with a, a panel of parents, teachers, administrators, different panels. And, and, and on a day, they, they had me doing a rotation. And, and of course, the school board. So I, I, I can't speak to the board, but they will set, they will tell the firm what they want done. And Danielle was correct. These proposals are, are identifying, I think it's safe to say the, the firms are saying that they believe in getting the stakeholders. And that's a word Danielle used and that's, that's the word that's used in the proposals. They will get stakeholders involved in the process.
So it's sort of a TBD, it sounds like.
Yeah, but I'm sure you can be assured you will have a crack at the candidates.
Right.
And, and then you will have an opportunity to tell the board how you feel about the, the different candidates.
Got it.
Doesn't do any good to have an opportunity to listen or to, to ask questions if you can't tell the decision matrix, the five board members, your thoughts.
And, you know, I also think it's safe to say, I mean, we're really focusing here on the public involvement is going to be, you know, selection of the candidates and working with the firm. Once we've selected, we're going to keep the public in the process as full as we can up until the point of selection. We certainly want to be transparent on what we're doing. The ability, you know, I guess of the interaction and the selection process of the firm itself that we may use, that's going to be something that probably can be dominated more by the board, by the public, but we, we're still going to involve the public and ask for, you know, input. But when it comes to interviewing the firm, for example, how we do that, it's probably going to be regulated by standard questions among the board. Beyond that though, I, I think it's safe to say that this board has always spoken for openness and particularly on something like this, we're going to do everything that we can. And, and another thing about jumping on the process early at this point and trying to get that firm selected you know, by the beginning of December is we're going to have, you know, between that target date of first week in December, let's say, and selection by the end of March, we're just going to have a lot of opportunity to figure out how we can involve the public in the process. You know, so that nothing's thrust upon and, you know, these meetings, they, they're timed into me, it takes a lot of involvement, whether you're in person or not. So, you know, the longer that we have to go through that actual deliberation, the better for everyone.
Thank you. And then last question, this might be getting the cart in front of the horse, horse in front of the cart? I don't know. Do you, has the board put together any sort of criteria or qualities, you know, values that you want to see reflected in your candidate? Is there any, you know, something that you're going to be sharing out with the community about what you're looking for, sort of big picture? You know, I, I know you, you can't be just a completely naked open book, but do you know what I mean? What values you want your superintendent to hold, what qualities you're looking for, big picture. Have you?
Carla, my understanding, something like that, is that something that the search firms will divine and help us hone in on and create care with the community? That's why they'll interview all of us first. And, you know, so that they understand what, they can kind of help us see what it is we're really looking for, what we're valuing, maybe what we should be.
It'll be a collaborative process, but I agree Danielle, that that's where it's going to start because one thing that we wanted to make sure as a board, I think, is that we get, you know, that advice and consult so we can make the decisions and, and really, you know, look from, you know, different perspectives. So I, I think that that is a work in motion, but it's also not just from the firm, but then obviously goes back to the community and what the community sees as priorities based on its knowledge, its experiences and so forth.
Yeah. So I would just recommend that it might be good to, I'm going to sound like Danielle, to find a way to collect information from the community about what qualities we might want to see in a new superintendent as you start this work with your firm. God knows many, nobody wants to take another survey, but, but you know, maybe there's a way that you can invite solicit comments and opinions from the community, because I think that would provide buy-in and help people feel heard in this process. I don't want to make any more work for you. I know you're working your tails off on this, but just something to think about.
If you have feelings now, community, feel free to email me and talk to me. I'm open. I'm, I mean, I think, you know, I think we all have our ideas probably at the outset. I think some of that may change for me, probably as we go through the process and hear from stakeholders and talk to the people who are experienced in this, but I'm always open. So send me your thoughts.
You know, you're, you're right Danielle, there's no bad time to write your school board member and say, hey, did you think about X? You know, sorry to drag you into this, Dr. Moser, there's no bad time, there's no wrong time to go to Dr. Moser and say, have you thought about this? We always encourage it generally, but this is definitely something where we're going to listen to what everyone says. So, you know, from speaking at least for me, and I think for the board, please reach out to us.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thanks for answering my questions.
Is there anyone else? Oh, thank you.
Night Carla.
No one else? Is any other visitor participation? I'll, I'll give you all a minute, but I, I guess I'll wrap things up then. Looks like we'll have a meeting next week, 23rd at six o'clock. We are going to discuss a variety of missions during narrowing down the qualifications that we're looking for in the firms, talking about fees and reference checking and ranking. And we're going to send out some more information to all the board members, just to make sure we're all synced up about how to plan ahead for this. And we're going to invite all of you to come back next week and listen to us deliberate all this in further detail. So with that, unless anyone else has anything else, I don't want to cut anyone off. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Danielle?
Second.
All right. Favor Danielle?
I.
Molly?
I.
Andrew Frank votes aye. The motion carries. I want to say thank you to everyone for showing up today. It was really great attendance and I'm very happy to see the public taking interest in how we're about to embark on this process. So thank you all.
All right. Let's do our homework.
And also remember, there's going to be two, I should point out, we're going to have a buildings ground committee meeting tomorrow, 5:30. And we're going to have our regular scheduled board meeting Wednesday evening at 6:30, I believe. So.
Sounds good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.